Time. So.
Oh wow.
But we got to put it down for them.
Yes.
But what's ever left over, we'd use it for fuel.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how it should be done.
Yeah. Yeah.
Pointing and all I see is the blame for town seal.
How you found Kara?
No, she's looking for us.
Yeah, he's gonna be a little wait. He's waiting, he's waiting for the ambulance for.
So.
I don't know.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I can't walk into the building anymore because of this thing. Okay, then we won't put you like that pass.
We're gonna give you jungle.
It worked. It worked, it worked, it worked.
We might be able to do this. Okay.
And so there's some kind of a glitch where.
Hello.
Hello.
So we have the same issue last time with the um, the camera.
Got it, Mary.
You have to just go over to the computer and turn your video on. Down in the bottom left-hand corner.
Okay.
Yay, there we go.
We're in business.
All right.
Business, so I think that um, our policy is that we can start the meeting even though we don't have a corm present because of COVID, is that still?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, perfect, so we're good to go, um. Alright, so Tom should be joining us soon, he was waiting on an ambulance, he's at a um, fire call. So I'm just gonna pull up our agenda, which disappeared for me, there we go. Okay, so we have, I have some meeting minutes in my mailbox from the twentieth. It should be short and sweet. Oh, this looks like. Here, I'm gonna share my screen, it looks like what I have is um, an agenda. Oh, will you, I'm sorry, Joanne, will you make me host, I hate to make you move again, um. And I can share. There he is, hey, Tom.
Hi, girl.
I say make the host. Yes, I do.
Cool, thank you. Okay, so this is what I have for under the tab that said meeting minutes, so I think this is just a mistake.
Okay, let me go send you the other one, sorry.
No worries, we can also just do it next meeting, Joanne, you don't have to rush around.
Okay, that's probably a good idea.
Um, so I'm gonna click on the one, three and see if these are meeting minutes.
Can I give you guys agendas shift for the twentieth instead of meetings?
Nope. The third, oh, for them, sorry. The third looks good, though, I'm looking over those now.
How you doing?
Good.
That's why I let the ambulance and tree told me to stay out.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Alright, so I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of um, January third, twenty twenty-two as written.
I make a sure. Under the town administrator's report, Kara.
Yeah.
Under the rapid recovery plan. I must have been a misunderstanding, but I said that the grant was submitted and we still haven't heard whether it was approved yet.
Okay, so we should make an amendment there?
Should make an amendment because it looks like that the grant was approved and had received funding. But they actually see were whether the grant was approved yet.
Okay.
Kara, I have to write something up for me.
So then we'll change that motion to as amended. Sorry, it was choppy, I couldn't hear you guys, does that work to change it to as amended?
Uh, you can, you can approve it. Change.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? Alright, all in favor?
I second that.
I?
Alright, I.
Okay, um. Is there any audience there that, or no, because we're closed, so there's no audience? Um, alright, we have action items, do we have, we don't have Board of Health on call because it changed the meeting link. Let me see if she texted me. Don't see anything, okay. Um, so I don't have any new COVID um, information, how are things going, Joanne, with being on um, the building being shut down, are you guys seeing any issues there?
It's a lot easier to regulate the mask mandates because either they have a mask on and they can come in and sit down, or they can wait outside and hold up.
I don't know why, having a hard time hearing you guys, are the microphones all where they normally are?
Oh, remember we used the cord? Oh.
Yeah, it's in front of Tommy. Tommy.
Nope.
Um, yeah, that's a little better, my husband's on a call too, so I'm hearing his call and it's confusing me a little bit, he's gonna move to a different space. Um, go to your cellar hole. Um. Okay, sorry, Jennifer, are you, was that Jennifer's verse I heard, does she wanna give a COVID report?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh. I can.
Okay, good. So we were down to twenty-seven, but then a day later, we went back up six more, so we're staying steady thirty-three.
Okay. Okay, I don't, personally, I don't uh, wish to make any changes tonight, it seems like things, you know, numbers are still really high, um. So, I don't have a motion to make as far as uh, as that goes, TJ or Tom, are you okay with leaving it as for now?
Well, yeah, we'll review it next week.
Week after.
It'll be, yeah.
For the health recommendation and next week we'll talk about it, yeah.
Nah, you're not reading next week, so it'd be.
Well, I guess. Yeah. You gotta, you gotta be patient with me, I'm trying to hold the sheet.
No worries.
If that's what I got over forward, I'm not getting any older.
Alright, perfect, then we'll um, reconvene on the twenty-fourth and see how things are going, um, in the meantime, if there's any issues at town hall, just let us know. Um, and we'll see if we can rectify those. Um, Jennifer, do you have anything else you wanna update us on for Board of Health?
Okay, I'm back, um. No, um. There's an email that I would like to send out to the three of you, if I could certainly CC on um, the um. Oh gosh, not for that.
County Minister.
On that, no, on the um, no, I don't think I do that part.
Oh.
Um, this report helps for the um, I don't know, the dog word that we discussed last week.
Okay.
As something came up and I rather just do that by email, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, perfect.
As long as you're not asking us to make any decisions, um. Okay. That should be fine.
It's more of an FYI.
Great, okay.
And then what you'd like to do with it, you can do.
Okay. Thank you, um, so your next item on the agenda, we have ARPA funds, um, last week we made a motion and tabled it um, to approve the twelve thousand dollars, um, that the, the store was looking for reimbursement.
Kara, Kara.
Hi, who's, who is it?
This is Dave.
Hi, Dave, how are you?
I'm doing wonderful, and yourself?
Not bad.
Did you get that email I sent you?
Um, I, about, wait, not the one about Huntington Road, the one from Nicole Sanford?
Yes.
I did.
Okay.
That's her name.
Yeah.
Caleb, that's her name, that sprinkled water, Nicole Sanford.
I saw it, they'll come on and fix it. From the letter I, from an email I got from her. It says, after further discussion with council, we will contact you regarding making road repairs without mending the IGA. The ground will likely need to be followed before any roads can be graded. Let's, but let's see what improvements can be done now and if further work is needed in the spring. Well, that's what I got from her.
And we're talking South Street here, right?
Correct, yes. Um.
Go ahead.
I, I was approached last week by DCR. Um, they're gonna do, they're gonna start some logging on Buell Land. Um, probably around March, April timeframe.
Okay.
Um. He's gonna, his contract with the logging company, they're gonna put, they're gonna buy six hundred fifty to seven hundred tons of stone for the road. And they would like us to um, to bring it out for him and take care of the road and what's, pretty much what's left over, we could use it to repair Buell Land of that building that went out.
Okay.
Um. I've worked with DCR before and they are, they are fantastic for doing this kind of stuff. Dude. Yeah.
Um, is is this going to be, is the logging gonna be done actually on Buell Land, or is it gonna be done in the state forest?
State forest.
So they want us to maintain the state forest land?
Part of that down part is still ours.
Okay.
Yes.
Just our part, right?
Yes.
Down to the cave.
Yeah, but.
Down to the spruce.
They're gonna give us a lot of material left over to, to repair our road that they're going to most likely.
Dave, one question, is that road gonna be dried out in March?
Um, sure. No, he said it could be March, April, or May.
Um, May is gonna be a lot better.
Yeah, but I'll be a lot busier.
I've seen that road stayed muddy till the first of May.
Um, the, they're gonna, the guys coming in the thirteenth to do a walkthrough in a bit on, on the logging. And he may, they're saying the timeframe starting maybe in March, it could be April, depending on the weather, if there are things else is on that. Um, on June, no, sorry, January twentieth, we have a meeting with the OPM. And discuss in the um, discuss the fee proposal with the um architect and designers coming up. At two thirty.
Did we get any numbers in yet?
No, not yet, that's what they're gonna, that's what they're gonna work on.
Okay.
Um.
Okay.
We did really good on job deals for the stuff that we sold.
Oh, great.
Yeah, um, just over almost twenty-one thousand. And another twenty, oh, with a twenty-one fifty for the scrap metal that left. So that's like twenty, almost twenty-three thousand dollars.
Great.
Um. I talked to Gordy about hybrid number nine on North Blenford, just past Old Chester Road, um, it seems to be a lot, a lot of water coming out of there. You know, damage. And he talked to Brad, Brad was going down to check, he had to do a chlorine test. Um, I would really like to see if Gordy has any plans of doing the work on that road before we start doing the road over, I hate to see him start work on the road when the road's finished, I don't think the town people like that either.
That's a good idea, yeah. Like happened with um, Russell Stage.
Correct. Um. My last, my last thing is, um. What direction you want me to go with this gentleman on North Blenford to repair his culvert, do you want me to approach him, ask him to repair it? Himself?
Um, it's at the end of his driveway?
Yes.
Uh, did you send, I know you were talking about sending some letters, have you been able to send those out?
No, and I, I'm still doing some drafts on, I'm gonna get it right, you know, before I mess.
So I would send him a letter first, I guess?
Okay.
Um, and that would request him to, to change it based on our bylaws for him to repair it.
Okay, alright, and if he doesn't repair it? We wanna wait.
I think it says right in those bylaws what our next step is.
Yeah, I think since we can find fifty dollars a day, then after a week, it goes up to a hundred and three hundred.
Yeah.
Um. Or do we just, you know, if he, if he can't afford to do it, can we hire somebody to do it for him? And send him the bill, he can't do it himself?
Oh boy.
Or should we just go in there and do it ourselves and get it done over with?
Well.
Tom or TJ, do you remember what the bylaw says?
I didn't get that, Kara.
Do you remember what the bylaw says about the um, driveway culverts?
Well, the bulk of it is the fact that if you have a culvert at the end of your driveway, it's your responsibility.
To clean it.
To maintain it.
Yeah.
Maintain it and replace it if it needs to be. I don't remember anything saying that the town will replace your culvert. If we have to replace a culvert, the landowner should be billed for it. And if he won't pay it, put an attachment on his house. And uh, when he goes to sell, it'll get paid.
Baby steps.
Well, the only other, Daisy, get out of there, the only other thing I can think of is that I don't know if this is a total different situation, but like what we did with the septic system for like um, emo, where we like let him borrow it from the town and like pay us back. I don't know if there's like a incident where like if the, the uh, resident like could not afford it and needed to pay small increments to the town, I mean, we could, if we get to that point, we can like check in with um, town attorneys and stuff, Dave, but for now, I would just send the letter and let's see.
Okay.
What happens.
Alright. Will do, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, and I sent um, the, the email from Nicole Sanford, I forwarded that to the um assessors, because I remember Eric came in, he was looking for sort of a timeline as to when some of those roads were going to be, which is what Caleb had reached out for us, um. I don't know, did she really give us a timeline, or was she just? I think she was kind of more just talking about that specific road, I can pull it up and see.
I would think that they'd have to wait till spring at this point.
Yeah, I did reach out to her, I spoke to her by phone to uh, this afternoon.
Okay.
Did say that it would probably be the spring before they um, started doing any repair and maintenance on the road that are under the uh, intergovernmental agreement with the town.
Okay.
Uh, she asked me about South Street, I talked to her about that, and she said that um, they would attempt to do some repairs uh, if the weather uh, cooperated. Um, so they're play it by ear as far as um, is it South Road or South Street?
South Street.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Now, she didn't think there needed to be any uh, agreement about South Street, that they would just do the repair um, without any uh, agreements.
Okay. So I guess we'll just touch base again in the spring, Dave, and see if they have more of a timeline.
Okay, and that brings up one more thing too, is that since um, the change of the, of the bylaw for um, bonded roads is that they need to inform us when they're gonna start their logging or whatever the, whatever work to be doing, going across our roads with those triaxals and everything else, so they need to have a bond done also, and I didn't know they were logging on South Street until I went down one day. They never, never contacted me at all on.
Okay, so let's um, send them a letter that um, that outlines what our new bylaw is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and let them know that going forward, they're gonna have to do that.
Okay. Sounds good.
I guess otherwise, how would they know, right?
Exactly.
Are they, are they logging now?
I suppose they're all done.
Oh, they're all done?
Yeah, 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 um, they never contacted me. Alright, so.
David, what's your schedule for North Blenford Road? What's your start date?
May.
May.
Or earlier, well, it depends on the weather.
I wanna make a motion that the Board of Slockman direct the water department to have all planned work done on North Blenford Road before the first of May.
Um, I think, yeah, let's reach out and let them know that, Tom, I think that's a good idea, so that they have a timeline to go by, I don't know if if some stuff might not be possible. But we can certainly make it a directive.
I think they can drag their feet about as good as anybody, so I think we should run them along a little bit and get this stuff done. So then when he gets done with the road, it's gonna stay for a day or two.
I think from uh, past experience, uh, any work that they're gonna, they, they have to do after the road is fixed that we should have a, a work order stating that whatever work they do, they have to bring the road back to.
Yeah, well, we've got this one first, we wanted.
Yeah.
Do this.
Yeah, well, have the, yeah, but would it be known that, you know, that the road has to be brought back after the fiasco out here on Russell Road? That, that is totally unacceptable.
That's why I made this motion to give him some leverage. So, well, is either of you two second it?
I'll second.
Okay.
Kara, the boss of your court now.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Yep, there you go, dude.
Thank you very much, Ellen.
Who's gonna contact water about all this?
That's, I think uh, that should be coming from the select board, Joanne.
Yeah.
Okay, but nobody was named, so is anything gonna happen?
So it would have to go, now, does it go to Gordon Avery, or does it go to the Blenford Water Department? The, the department, yeah.
Yeah, the commissioners first, and then they've got to pass it to him, I believe.
I think you'll get more done if you go directly to Gordon, though, I mean.
You know better than I do.
Yeah, they're, the commissioners aren't here very much, and he does have a hard time getting them in here for meetings even, so I think that um,
Send it right to Gordon.
Just a suggestion that you should start with Gordon, I think you'll get more done more quickly, starting with him.
No, CC, the commission and Gordon, you know, send it to Gordon and CC the.
Send what, am I doing this?
You want me to draft some?
Who's doing this? I can, I'm not saying I don't wanna do it, but we just made this motion and nobody talked about how it's gonna get done.
The letter from.
Okay, Caleb says he's gonna draft a letter.
Okay.
I'll help him with the, the gory details.
Good man.
Alright, thank you. Remember, we catch more flies with honey, right?
Yep.
Alright. Um. Dave, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, that's it. I may see you next week, we'll see.
Stay warm out there tomorrow.
What's that?
Stay warm out there tomorrow, it's supposed to be brutal.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, minus two, wind chill factor is minus thirteen to fifteen to twenty.
I know, the kids already have a delay.
Well, there's like, uh, Connolly is closed, the, the school is closed.
From Boston.
And that's, why, is it a little cold? Anyway.
Little cold, listen to him.
The roads looked pretty good during that ice.
Yes, they did, we got, we got a little, an hour has started.
Now, tell the guys next time when they back on my driveway to drop the sand on their way out.
Sure. How much you want, you want ten or, or twelve? No, just a little spread, okay. Anything else, people, anything else, that's it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave, yes.
I have a December twentieth rough report of it, our select board meeting here, that's gonna be signed, voted on, and signed.
I'll just give it another time. I'll give it another time, Tom, or if you want, Tom and TJ to.
Right there off the uh.
It's only gonna take a minute.
The December twenty-one, he found it, I just gave you the agenda, you were the lucky one.
Yes.
Okay, you guys can approve it, then, that's fine.
Yeah, man.
It's only gonna take a minute.
Yep, go for it, Tom.
I would make a mo- I would make a motion that we approved the meetings of September, or December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I.
I abstain, because I don't have a copy.
Did you what?
I'll abstain, since I haven't seen a copy.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Alright, um, next up, we have ARPA funds, so um, we had tabled the motion to approve the twelve thousand, or around twelve thousand for the um, the Blainford General Store, um, so I spoke with um, Jennifer Gerard, is the owner of the Blainford Store. Um, and we we had some questions, Caleb, this might be something that we need to, to figure out a little bit with ARPA, so here's the dilemma.
I uh, I put something in your file there. I know you didn't get it because you aren't here. And it, it explains how the, the funds are supposed to be distributed. And the first thing is, it's for the assistance of small businesses and private industries.
Yeah.
That need that help with their uh, economic recovery.
So that's not the problem, the problem, and it's not really a problem, we just need to figure out how to go about this paper-wise. The question is that um, the store has um, so the store didn't have the money to purchase these items, so Jennifer and her husband purchased them, and so the store owes them, business-wise, if you guys understand what that, so the store owes them, and so we would be looking at reimbursing um, the store um, for this money, and I just don't know, we can't, so we have to look at reimbursing, because we can't look at paying things that we don't have yet, so we can't look at like paying the store the twelve thousand dollars to do something that they haven't done yet, because in, in the eight years, my eight years of working in government, my understanding is we can never pay for something in advance, so we could, there are other things that they have done to the store, um, improvements that they have made, that we can use some of this ARPA funding um, as to reimburse, but I, I don't know, so I was talking to Jennifer about like gathering some invoices, um, so do we pay those, those? Um, so do we pay those? Those invoices are already paid, so we're looking at actually paying. The store out, so I guess it's just paper wise, like how does that work? Does that make sense?
What are you, what are you looking for? Uh, oh, a list of what they purchased and labor?
Yeah, so Jennifer was gonna collect some invoices, but those invoices are already paid, so we're reimbursing. That money to Jennifer and Greg because they covered it for the store, but we're actually reimbursing. The store. Does that make, does that make sense, Jennifer? Maybe you can explain it better.
Yes, so I think that you should be outside of the equation.
Okay.
And just deal with the store and the invoices. So whatever invoices. You wa- want to choose from, because I didn't know which invoices to bring. Um, it all has to do with hardship of. The, you know, I mean, listen, we were only in business for less than two years before COVID hit, so. You know. I mean, I don't know. It it should. Be to the store. It shouldn't be right to us. It should be to the store.
Yeah.
Right, I mean.
Yeah, I I follow. Yeah, it's not personal, it's like.
Right.
Right.
We'll deal with this, right.
Right.
So we did the paving and the wall and the um cancel system or the venting stuff.
Yeah.
And of course, the new furnace, that was a given that hadn't been done. Um, so, but I don't know which types of of these things can go underneath the ARPA.
Yeah.
So that's why I did the ones I did, because I didn't know. What the guidelines are.
Yeah, well, the the guidelines were kind of vague. When, when you were uh, you know, with the applications. I found that the the guidelines were kind of broad. And uh they didn't require, you know, a whole lot of information. They just wanted the summary of what, you know, had transpired. And that's like with the fair, you know, the expenses were paid. But not, there was no fair, so that's a loss.
Right.
And with you not have, be able to open the store, that's a loss. And those are stated right here in the uh agenda that the the uh ARPA. Guidelines are, or principles are, the guiding principles of it. And according, if you go down the list. Reimbursements are at the top of the list, that then the investments in water, shore, broadband. And all that. But then the restrictions state that you cannot use directly or indirectly to offset tax reductions. Or delayed tax or tax increases. I mean, there's a lot here that pertains to uh town projects. And we have to be careful how we do it. Now, it says we can invest in water, shore and broadband, but it doesn't say anything about roads. So, you know, uh, this has to be, you know.
Right.
Uh, gone through, and I think, you know, the first thing is the reimbursements. Now, we already allowed. Uh, five fifty eight thousand dollars or what was it, fifty eight, fifty six, somewhere in there, for water. And it was a needed thing and, you know, we all proved it. And then uh we did. What was it, twenty thousand for the broadband, which is follows in the instructions.
Yeah.
So I think uh, you know, these reimbursements for losses. Should be taken care of, because we got four years to do this, but. You outlaid money to do work for you. Now you're paying interest on that money, and the same thing with the fairgrounds and anybody else that had applied. You know, so I think uh, my my standing is, is that we should reimburse those who are created losses and not. Then what's left, we'll have to deal with. You know, that's my.
I agree with you. I'm just trying to figure out from a paperwork standpoint, how we pay that, because we don't have an invoice, right? So so Jennifer has invoices that are paid, that she's has, is proof from the store. So I'm sorry. The store has invoices that they are presenting us that are paid um as proof of what they require for reimbursement. My question, and it might be a question for Sarah, for our tax collector. If we don't, because with water, we had an invoice we had to pay. It was an unpaid invoice. That is not the situation here. So my question is just. How do we go forward with distributing those funds? If we don't have an invoice to pay? Does that make?
Is there any reason why um, I see what's so, I'm sorry. So maybe I can flip it around to a different scenario. So it would be the, an invoice. That totals whatever with the invoices we paid attached to it. Similar to if you out of your own pocket paid something and you had to be reimbursed from the town. You don't, you would have to take, say, the post office, the postage that you spent. Attach it to a thing showing that you paid with that receipt with the cover letter that you're being reimbursed.
I think, yeah, I think that's a good idea. I, and I would, I think this has to go to Sarah. Or maybe Eric Kunchep, but one of them is gonna be able to tell us exactly what, what it needs to look like in order for our record, just. As far as like, you know, what we're paying. Um, I I'm all in favor of paying it and in doing the reimbursement. I just wanna make sure we do it correctly. That's all.
So. I wanna hear you guys.
I was gonna say, the accountant, uh Eric has to uh. He's the one that's the paperwork uh for the ARPA funds.
No, I've already done two times. I've done it myself. That's what I'm gonna talk about in a minute.
Yeah. For when you submit a report. It has to come from the accountant. In other words, you, what you've done, you process the one, the funds that were approved. Uh, to uh whoever requested the use of the ARPA funds. But a final accounting has to be done through invoices.
Yeah, yeah, I, that's what I did. I did cover sheets.
But it has to, it has to go directly uh to the uh, the US Treasury from the accountant.
Well, I don't know what he does, but I sent both of these bills through the accountant.
You don't have to, you don't have to do a report. The first report is due, I think, in April this year.
Okay, but that's not for me. That's not for me to worry about.
That's not for you.
Okay, so.
That's for the accountant.
Kara, can I, can I tell you? Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say that the accountant is probably a good source to determine. What is necessary to distribute the funds to the town.
So Kara, I will put together a cover sheet, but you guys, you guys have to do one more thing. You have to decide how much you're gonna give to her. And then I will take those invoices and I will do a cover sheet to the accountants. Saying that this is the Blanford Country Store and it is reimbursement for lost revenue. Because their store has been closed due to COVID. Then I will call Sarah and I will call the accountants. And I will make sure that this is the proper way to send it and we'll see how it comes out in the launch.
Okay.
How's that sound?
I think that's a good idea. So, thank you. Um, that's perfect, Joanne. I think, I really appreciate that. I think that that. That makes sense, so we can just motion, so what, the the request was fifteen thousand. Um, so the motion that's um on the table from last week. Was to approve fifteen thousand dollars to um. To the Blanford Country Store reimbursement um to address negative economic impacts from ARPA funding.
Ooh, fancy words too. I like that.
Ready?
Cover sheet.
Oh, shut up.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that motion? All, oh, go ahead.
Then do not the accountants review.
Um, we can do that, yeah, that's fine.
Well, part of this. One eighth was, as I read it when it first came out, was to help small businesses. And that's what we're trying to do here, so I can't see where there's gonna be a problem.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
We'll find out next week when I send the bills in on Thursday, if it will go through.
I don't think it's gonna be a problem. It just might be a matter of back and forth, asking for paperwork from Jennifer, you know. But I don't think it's gonna be a problem either, Tom. All in favor?
Alright.
Sorry, I seconded. I can make somebody up.
Yeah, tell me.
Just make someone up. Just kidding, I didn't say that on Zoom. Uh. Alright, so that's all we have for action item. Jennifer, do you have anything else on that, or we're good?
I just want to say to Joey, I, because I have various invoices and they. What is it, fifteen thousand? Can I keep those invoices out?
Yeah.
To make it.
Sure.
And then, sure, and then the rest I can.
Decide and then I'll write it up, but I'll talk to you before I send it in. Show it to Caleb as well.
Okay.
And then do what I said through Sarah and the accountant and ship it forward.
Okay.
That work for you? Alright.
So, now Kara, you you wanna do the uh change for the fair?
No, I don't think we're ready to do that one. I don't, I wanna have someone here to discuss the fair. Because I, like I talked about last time, I'm, I still feel like there's a little bit of overlap between the two. So I would like to have um. I don't know, who's, who would we invite from the fair to talk about it?
That would be Bruce Wyman.
I would like to, before we put any money to the fair, find out they're gonna have one this year.
Well, they still expended money. I mean, they've already expended money.
I don't think we can see this death horse.
Well.
Should I invite him for the next meeting?
I think that's gonna be a death row.
And why would we invite him?
More, more money, so. Yeah, I will, I will, I will contact Bruce and uh see if I can get him down here. Not next week, but the week after.
And I'll have her husband come as well.
Yeah.
Um, and then, so the other thing we should talk about on that same agenda is just make sure they're aware of that. Four million dollars in grant funds that's being released for fairgrounds and seeing if they're making any effort.
Kara?
Yeah.
Hold up a minute, we've got Mary talking here.
Uh, Greg will come also with Bruce.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Vice president.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard, I heard that.
And um, I didn't hear what you said, Kara. What did you wanna be careful of?
I just wanna make sure that um, that we mentioned at the meeting that. Remind them of the four million that was released in um fair uh grants. On, and ask them if they are making any effort with Ira over at PVPC to acquire any of that funding.
Well, he'll be at the next meeting, so we can all ask him.
Perfect.
That work?
Okay. Okay.
You're gonna invite Bruce?
Yeah.
I'm gonna invite Greg and I'll do the, I'll get him on the uh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kara.
Bye, Jennifer.
Just tie it, you know, get in touch with Greg also, so they can get together.
Yep, I'm out of it.
Alright, so that's uh um it for us for um action items. Uh, we have unfinished. Um Caleb, do you wanna give us your town administrator report?
Sure, uh, we already covered Trenfield Water, I believe. I was gonna uh speak about that. Uh, and I just wanted to mention that I did receive an email. Uh, from the RRG employee, Chris. Uh, because there was a question from one of the members of the Board of Assessors about why they weren't here in the office. And uh evidently both uh, Chris and, I'm not sure the the woman's name, it's Ally.
Ally, yeah.
But they both uh contacted COVID.
Oh, okay.
So they're out. That's why they weren't at.
Okay.
We're back today, Kara.
Okay.
And uh, and and the down, Chris said that he was working remotely. So, uh, he, he's back today. Uh, Joanne, I didn't know that.
Yeah, he is.
Okay, so that was the reason. So I just wanted to mention that, because it was.
Thank, thank you. Um, just a quick question on that. Joanne, you might know the answer. Um, this has come up before. Um. Do they have a contact that they contact to let them know they won't be in the office if they are not able to make it?
They do, and they did do that. They just said they were working remotely for the week. They didn't say why.
Perfect, okay. No concerns.
Uh, and then uh, I was asked to draft a letter of support. Uh, for the uh fire department grant, the five town grant for the uh. The, the breathing app apparatus.
Yes, I think I just saw that. Did you just send it?
I sent the email to all three uh select board members. And uh. And so with your approval, we can send this letter out, if it's okay, unless you want me to make any changes to the letter.
Alright, so I have it pulled up right now. I'm just gonna review it. Yeah, no, I think that's perfect. I would motion to approve um the letter in support of the fire department grant to um. Congressman Richard Neal. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Caleb.
Welcome. Uh, and then uh, just to mention that I will be. Participating in a Zoom meeting uh with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Discussing uh a grant that they're, that they received. They're using the Collins Center at UMass Boston to perform the study. I guess it's a shared human resources study.
Oh, yes.
Not about that yet, but I'll be participating in the uh.
Thank you.
Uh, on Wednesday, January nineteenth at eight thirty in the morning.
Okay. Yeah, I remember us talking about that a little while back. Okay, cool.
You should better get up in the middle of the night to get going for that one. Get your snow boots on.
Um, so I think that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. That's great. Thank you, Caleb. Um, I'm trying to see if I have unfinished business. I've got, no, I have, I have all new business. Anyone else have unfinished business?
Uh, we got something about that laptop.
Yeah, that's new business. That's under new business.
Okay.
Um, alright, so new business, we have the record management license. So Chief, um Tammy has asked us. Um, my email. If you, did you guys see the email where she's requesting some funding out of, um, well, I'm suggesting capital, but some funding for. The same management system that they have over at Chester.
She wants, she wants to be here for that, Kara, so she has to table it and.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
He's not, she said, she's not feeling that poorly, but she looks awful and she wants to be in front of you guys when she talks about it, so she's willing. Until the uh, the next meeting.
Feels better. It's no joke, I'll tell you that much. Um, okay, so we'll table that until next week, or until the twenty fourth. Um, alright, so we've got our expenditure report.
I haven't thrown, I haven't seen anything that's out of the ordinary. Nothing, jump out of that thing.
We're still at what, about sixty percent?
Yeah, definitely.
I think everybody's. But have a, using due diligence under budgets.
Yeah, it's definitely made a huge difference checking the um, the expenditure report on a weekly basis, I think. Um. Just making us aware, you know, more, sort of quicker, if something's way out of whack. Um, we talked about the treasurer's clerk, but do you know if anyone's let Sarah know about that? That's at eighty-six percent.
Kara, um, she sent me an email today. It has been charged to the wrong account. They did a line transfer and I changed the number so that it doesn't happen in the future.
Thank you. Alright, um, okay, so town hall miscellaneous expense is pretty high. Um, however, mowing season's over, so that might settle. I don't ever think we budget enough for that. This seems to happen every year. Um, so we are going to look at, I'm just looking at the office supplies. Yeah, we only budget four thousand, so to take a off, to take a laptop out of that is gonna deplete that, um.
I don't think we need that much in there, Kara. I didn't use a lot last year. I think that might be a safe place.
Okay.
And if I find at the end of the year, I don't buy that much anymore in that account. Anybody in any department that wants anything like big items like ink, things like that, that doesn't come out of that account anymore.
Okay.
At the end of the year, if we get short, I can make the line transfer at that time if you want.
Okay, that, yeah, that makes sense. If it's there, we might, I guess it makes sense to use the appropriate line item so that we, that, that we budget more appropriately next year. Um.
Yeah, so.
So when we get to that, we can vote on that line item, then the town hall office supplies. Um, the external IT is at seventy-five, but I know we pay that in chunks, so I'm not worried about that one. Um, the police, we already know is really high. Fire department expenses are almost out. Do we know if Chief Mater is aware of that?
Yes, she is, but we, we put a lot of money into it once.
Okay.
Apparently it's done now. But, uh, there was a lot of things wrong with it that went back after I left as fire chief. No maintenance was done on any of that apparatus. And so it had to be caught up with. That's just too far now.
Do you know if he has any, um, management plans for the next, what are we at, uh, five months? With just the three thousand dollars for?
He may be coming to you for more money. I can't answer that for him.
Okay, um.
He's got some, he's got some money in, uh, the earnings account billing more to the turnpike, so let's go bring that up.
Okay.
That might help.
Will you just let him know that we discussed it? Will you just let him know that the select board just was looking at it and discussed it, like, next time you talk to him?
Alright, I'll probably be talking with him tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, let's see. Uh, everything else looks pretty good. Alright, um, okay, so next up, we have, um, oh, so the school committee meeting update. I went to the school committee meeting update, um, and school committee meeting on when last week. Um, we were voting on an amendment, so the regional agreement has passed. But now we're backtracking and we are fixing the wording in the regional agreement regarding an alternative assessment. Um, I'm gonna try to explain this the best I can. I think I took notes, but okay, here we go. Um, so we're gonna add some new wording in regarding the, um, alternative assessment. So we've got the regular assessment that would happen based on how many children we have in town. Um, or we have the alternative assessment, which is what all, every year, all six towns have to approve it in order for it to happen. Um, and so that's the wording we're, we're focusing on. So no matter what wording we put in here for alternative assessment, if that year all six towns don't approve it, it doesn't happen anyways. Um, but, so I think the meeting was, had a good representation from all across towns, um, school committee and, um, finance and, um, select board members. And the, um, so we're gonna be meeting again this week because we made a couple changes to what they had. And what it's gonna be is that, um, we're gonna have, hold on. Uh, gonna be a one point five cap increase. So this is definitely something we wanna, our finance wasn't there and they definitely wanna be a part of this, um, discussion. So if someone, so in the alternative language, if a town's increase based on the amount of kids that, you know, moved into the town was to go above a one point five percent, then we would take that difference and we would divide it amongst the other hill towns based on, um, population. So it wouldn't be divided equally, it would be based on like how many, you know, what, what your population. So Huntington, for example, has a higher population, so they would get more of that. Um, so one point five cap for each town increase, and then anything over that is divided up so that it's shared sort of equally, and that would be the alternative assessment. And that way, the idea is that we can, um, budget a little bit better, um, and it's not a huge jump any year for towns. And this would be based on the five-year rolling average instead of like, um, each year's a, um, whatever, assessment. Does that make a little bit of sense, the way I explained?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and one thing that I thought was really cool that I wanted to mention to you guys that Chester does, that Andy was talking about at the meeting, was that they have an education stabilization fund. And what they do is they budget up to the percentage increase and put that money in that account. And even if their budget, if they're, they don't end up having to pay up to that amount, that money stays in that account. Or if they pay, um, if they have to pay, so the next year if they have to pay more, that, they'll take that funding from there. Which I thought was a pretty cool idea. Um, I don't know, it would be a finance, uh, discussion for budgeting for, um, our next fiscal year. But that way, if, if our assessment does go up higher than expected, we have a stabilization account to pull from and it doesn't affect our overall budget as much. So I thought that was pretty cool.
You do have a stabilization account now, right?
We do have a stabilization, this is a specific education stabilization account. Um, so I thought what we could do is when we're working on our budget, um, we could just reach out to, um, Chester and ask them exactly how they go about funding it and then see if we wanted to mimic that just as a safety net. It looks like our assessment is, um, lower than last year for this coming budget year. So we're not, it's not gonna be a problem for, for us this year, so it might be a good time for us to start that stabilization fund. And, um, just, you know, keep it for rainy days. Um, okay, so I have a couple other small new business, or sorry, old business. I've got, um, I taught, touched base with Dick Gates from Conservation regarding Belfleur, which is the marijuana company going, um, on, uh, the Otis, is it Otis Stager? Yeah. Um, as we know, their work is frozen right now. Um, and he let me know they are currently seeking, um, funding, they're, they need more funding than they, than they thought, um, based on, uh, information from their contractor. But that Conservation is, has contacted and let them know that even though they're frozen on work, they do have to continue to, um, meet the conservation restrictions. Um, so they should be having, you know, like, I don't know, about monthly or every couple of months, they have to make sure that there's no water runoff or whatever coming down the hill and stuff. So just FYI, our, um, Conservation is all over that. Um, where you start that? Oh, Mar, Margaret reached out to me from the Council on Aging. And, um, as you, as I'm sure you guys have heard, Julie Mueller has passed. And she was a huge support of Council on Aging in town and actually her children have asked in lieu of flowers that Council on Aging be, um, receive, um, donations. And so what count, what Margaret is asking is if we could have an area in town hall where we could put up some sort of a plaque just thanking her for all of the, um, work that she did for the town. Which I, I thought was a great idea, but I wanted to touch base with you guys first and see what you guys think about that, um, just sort of starting an area where we, we start to honor some people that make a, a big contribution to town.
Oh, she was involved in, you know, she was chair of the planning board since Price for Nickers. And then, uh, she was on the chair of the Board of Assessors for a number of years.
Yeah, she's done a lot.
Yeah.
So I told her I, I thought that would be fine with you guys, um, and we can sort of, um, once they have come up with an idea of where they wanna put it, you know, just let us know. But my other thought was it would be nice to honor people, um, before they pass. Um, and thank them for their involvement. So just kind of a thought out there, and I know it's, we're not in a good place to be doing anything brand new right now, but just a thought, it might be kinda cool to, um, to set aside a space to honor people, like, I was thinking like a resident of the month, or I don't know, you know, just something kind of nice to, to honor people that do stuff on a daily basis. Um, you know, without being asked or paid. Um.
Line of, uh, erecting a monument to Tommy there. It'd be kinda short.
Nice. Did you guys notice the new bench out in the park?
That the what?
There's a new bench, um, uh, Rainey and his family dedicated a bench, um, to James Start and his family, um, in honor of their son that passed away. Um, and there is a plaque on it and is out in our playground.
Oh, cool.
Instead of pray for me, he had play for me put on the button.
That's really sweet. That's really sweet. Um, so check it out. But, um, anyways, just, just to think about, it might be cool to do a spot out there. So do you want me to let her know that you guys are fine with that?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, um, and then my last thing is, um, the laptop. So we need, desperately need a laptop for the TA. We got a quote for about a thousand dollars, I think. Pull that quote up, so we have an exact amount. Um, and like we talked about earlier, I think we can go ahead and take it right out of Office Supplies. I don't know how to get onto the ticket here, Joanne. Let me see.
Ticket?
Yeah, Office Supplies.
Just trying to get the exact price for you guys. Here, let's see if it's in this one. There we go. Um, so it is for, um, so I would make a motion to purchase a, um, laptop for the price of nine fifty-nine with the additional eight gigabyte RAM of ninety dollars. Um, from Novus Insight to replace the current TA laptop out of Office Supplies. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Um, and I guess they did just get a new, oh, that's the other thing we need to talk about. They just got a new TA application in today that was sent out, um, so they were gonna meet, um, I think their group is meeting Wednesday or Thursday to talk about that application. Um, but in the meantime, we have two applicants to interview. I talked to Dave, he let them know that these two, um, people that the select board is gonna move forward with interviewing them. How do we want to set up the interview process and do you, my thought was, uh, Dave reminded me that Wendy offered to do reference checks, so I can reach out to her and ask her to do that for these two guys. Um, do you want to do both interviews at the same time, or do we wanna do two different nights? What do you guys think?
I think they, they deserve a personal interview.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't go for piggybacking them. I'd rather do them different nights.
Okay, so we have to do them in an open meeting. Um, do we wanna do them, um, at a time other than a regular select board meeting, or? I would like to, sooner than later, I would like to move, you know, move on this because we don't wanna drag our feet. Um, we could, we could look to set up a meeting as early as, uh, next week, since we're not meeting on the seventeenth.
How about Wednesday?
Alright, let me just look at my calendar. I think we have.
Wednesday I'm out of town.
You're out of town?
Jesus, you didn't ask, you didn't ask permission.
Oh, damn.
And Monday's a holiday, so you probably shouldn't do it on a holiday.
Yeah.
How about Thursday?
I could do Thursday, um, Charlotte has via Latin lessons, um, until five, but I could do like, um, six o'clock or five, five thirty on Thursday. What works for you?
This week?
Yeah.
On the thirteenth. Oh, wait, is that too, that's way too soon. That's three days, we can't do that. Oh, no, the twentieth, sorry, the twentieth. Phew, what was I thinking? Okay, does the twentieth work for you guys?
Yeah.
What time?
It's been a whole day of duty.
Time?
What time?
Uh, do you wanna do five thirty?
Five thirty.
About the second interview.
Okay, so, um, hold on, let me put that one in for, we said five thirty. Alright, so we're gonna do that one on the twentieth. The second one, we could do on, um, let's see, we have our select board meeting on the twenty-fourth at six. We could do it at five on that Monday.
Alright, that works.
Monday, twenty-third.
Um, okay, so I will reach out to, um, Wendy and ask her to do the, reference check before then. And I will give Dave Hobson these times and ask him to just schedule with those people. I think, I, I don't think he would mind doing that. Um, we, do we have questions from the last round that we want to ask these folks?
There was a question about whether, where, where the questions were. Are they in Josh's computer? Nobody seems to know where these questions are. Karen was supposed to be digging into it.
And I have. Let me see if I have anything, um.
She asked me about, uh, the questions Josh had put together the last time, but I was not in that position at that time, so I don't. That's gotta be something she's gotta dig out of her stuff.
Alright, I can look, I'm seeing some stuff in my email, but I don't know if there's any attachments here. I don't see any attachments. Um, I feel like they were sort of the same one that, that we have used. Oh, maybe here's some. Interview question for highway. I don't know, that's not it. Um, alright, I can take a look, but we should try to, we should try to, um, have those ready. Um, you know, within the next couple of days, I think. The, the other thing we could do is we can ask, um, I, I think we should have a copy of the questions that the interview committee asked. Oh, we might wanna make sure, we might choose some of those, or we might wanna make sure we don't overlap. What do you guys think?
It would be, you'd be asking them the same questions.
Yeah.
The other interview.
Um.
Copy so close?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going way back. I remember Adam adding in some, some questions. I wonder if it would even be in my other email. Alright, I'll take a look and see if I can find them, Joanne, on my computer.
I'll ask Karen if she had any.
Okay. Um, so then, I think other than that, we're ready. Let me just look at my email from Dave to see if there was anything else that we needed. Uh, where is it, Dave Hobson? No. So did you see the most recent, am I allowed to say where the most recent person is from? I don't know, maybe I can't. He's from very far away.
Yep.
That's, I guess that's all I'll say. Alright, TA search, um. Let's see. Maybe I should stop share. Maybe I should stop share. Oh, it just disappeared. Okay, so it says, um, references, we talked about that. Um, they asked, so the committee wanted to know if we wanted any extra help with providing potential questions.
Kara?
Yes.
I just got a text, um, is somebody trying to get into the meeting?
Someone trying to get into the meeting? No. Who is it?
I don't know, she's a phone.
She's gonna have to click on the new link.
I don't see anybody else trying to get in here.
Here, I can, uh, here, I'll text you. She's not trying to get in because she's trying to get into the old meeting. So here's the meeting number, I'm texting it to you. 882-719-29014. So that's the first number, and then the password is the second number I'm sending you. So she can plug that in to get in. Um, 588-875. So Tom and TJ, do you want me to reach out to the committee and ask them for some example questions? And do you want to talk with them about any insight before, or would we prefer to go in, um, with clean slates and not hear about their thoughts?
I think we should have a set of questions that we could review beforehand. But we, we agree on...
Okay, so I will let Dave know if they want to, um, share some questions with us, that we would be happy to, um, take a look at those, um, this week, before the meeting, before our interviews. But I don't know if we necessarily wanna meet with the committee for insight, only because I'm, I don't wanna get like a skewed, I kinda wanna go into it with, without having, um, you know, thoughts about who I want. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Mary has a comment?
Yeah.
Mary, what are your thoughts?
Our, our charge was to review the candidates and move forward anybody we thought worthy of the position.
Yeah.
To you, so we've done our job.
100%, yeah.
I really, I really feel that to ask the hearing committee for any thoughts or insights might possibly color your perspective.
Yeah, I agree, that's what I'm saying. So I'm just reading from, um, Dave's email and he's just saying if we want any, um, insights during the process, et cetera. So, yeah, I agree. I don't, I don't think I want to get, um, any more information, just besides some, maybe some suggested questions.
So, so we do have questions that we did on other interviews for, uh, town administrator, and those, those we would use in, in this interview.
Well, let's check them out because they might be a little outdated, TJ. I think because we were in such a place of financial despair, that some of the questions were like bleeding for help. Um, but yeah, let's take a look at them and see if, if, I'm gonna look and see if I can find them, and, um, if we think that they're still relevant. And, and then if we wanna add any on our own. Like, I would personally have questions, um, you know, I've, I've questions about budgeting, um, about management, you know, a couple different things that I would like to ask.
Mary, go ahead and alert.
Uh, Dave can send you the list of the questions that the committee asked.
Yes.
So that you'll know that they've already answered some of these questions, but you might want more information, or you might wanna hear from them what their responses.
Yeah, thank you. I saw those, yeah. Okay, maybe I'll reach out to Josh too and see if he has any advice or questions. Okay, so, um...
Do you have any thoughts? Uh, I certainly could provide some questions for you.
Yeah, that would be great, Caleb, if you wanna draft something.
Uh, I probably wanna think about it and look into it before I promote you anything specifically tonight, but...
Okay.
I mean, I've been interviewed myself, so I have some experience.
Yeah. I'm sure.
That's what we're looking for, so...
Perfect. Grant writing, that's definitely a big plus. Yeah, and that would be great, Caleb, thank you.
Yeah, grant writing's very important.
Yeah.
Budgeting and budgeting.
Yeah.
The management style, which you've already mentioned, but how you get along with other people, how you interact with other people is very important.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we have experience.
But then, they, they, they might be very intelligent. They might have a lot of knowledge, but they just may not be the right person for, for the job.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so let's, um, let's just take a look at questions via email. We can circulate those, we won't make any decisions, but we can circulate some emails this week. I'll send you guys if I find anything. Um, and then we'll just make sure we have something ready for our first interview. Is there anything else? Let me look on my agenda. We have some tabled items, but we don't need to talk about those. Um, did that person wanna come into our meeting, Joanne, or was she trying to get into it?
Um, they're trying, they're still trying. I don't know who it is yet, I'm asking them, but they're saying they're trying to get in online, but the meeting's over, so...
Yeah, I mean, I don't see anyone coming in. If, I, I gave you this meeting, um, the one that we rescheduled information, so she should be able to get in.
She said too many numbers, but I saw, I, the numbers you sent were the same numbers I sent her.
Okay, yeah, I typed them to you. Okay, let me just make sure I type the right ones. 882-719-29014, yep, 588. So the second one is the password, the first one is the meeting ID.
Yeah, I told them password.
Okay.
So I checked with what I sent them, and that's what I sent them, so I don't know.
She didn't tell you what it's pertaining? No?
Does not work from agenda. Just explain that to you. Should I just tell them the meeting's over? Is the meeting over?
Yeah.
Yeah, where it's over. Okay. Alright, so, um, we'll see you guys the 20th for our interview. Make sure what, we have, um, questions beforehand. Stay warm tomorrow. Meeting, so meeting adjourns at 7:24. Bye, guys, thank you. Now beeping is not annoying or anything, by the way. That's not something we need to hear.
Didn't, I have a battery, I just, uh, I'm not sure if, um, I'm supposed to have Poppy put that in, or is IT gonna do it?
Just trying to slowly drive us all crazy?
Yeah. Yes.
Have a good night, guys.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.